All right, welcome everybody to the Eagle City Council Special Meeting at June 2nd, 2022 at 3:00 PM. We can roll call, please?
Eaglesburger, here.
Pike.
Here.
Bond.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
Cormus present.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council have any additions, deletions, or modifications of the agenda?
No, seeing none, staff?
Nope. All right, and we'll go on and move on to reports. Item five, Eagle Fiber Optic Project Update. So just want to let everybody know that we've started to buy some of the equipment.
We have got, Biari is getting ready to finalize the overall plan of where all the fiber optic lines will run and what neighborhoods that we started and can get to. The ordinance has been written and we adopted it the other night for new development to put in the conduit and stuff for the connections in the new neighborhoods. Our goal, once we get all the information back from Biari, is to figure out where we want to start going first. Obviously it's going to radiate out from City Hall, but where do we use the ARPA money to get out to other areas that we can get people on the system as quick as possible? That's our goal, is how many people can you get on the system to start paying for itself and before you run out of the ARPA money. So those are all things that we're putting together. We have, the group Fat Beam has been running extra conduit everywhere that they're doing something underground. So if we do decide it's an advantage for us to purchase it from them rather than running it ourselves in some areas, we can do that to get stuff faster to places. So those types of things will be coming up in the future and so on and so forth. Devonte with IT has been looking to find all the equipment to purchase so that we can have the hut and all the IT equipment to go out from City Hall, like I said, moving forward. One of the things that we're looking at right now is how quick can we get down to the senior center and Heritage Park to light up that area? And then there's some picking up a lot of the customers along that route too for the small businesses that are in town to get better internet service throughout some of those older areas. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And you guys have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Bond?
Uh, I guess two. First of all, when we talk about Heritage and Senior Center, assuming those are set up for public wifi?
Yeah, public wifi and then also connecting the senior center so that right now, what we'll be able to do is we'll be able to run what happens at City Hall and what connection we have to the internet with all of our public spaces, we'll be able to run it all out of here. So you're not having to buy a separate internet connection everywhere. So we have internet connections in all of our sprinkler boxes throughout the city, all of our parks for our cameras. And once we connect all those different devices, it'll only be one fee that we're paying for internet from City Hall and it will be connected just like as if they were technically in the building, which will be nice and save the city a lot of money moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. On that one too, I think I've asked, or we've talked a couple times, I'd like to get a map, kind of a long-term build-out map. I know that's in the process of part of the, but a proposed locations and a build-out plan of, we have the initial short-term versus long-term, just so we can actually kind of identify where we're going with this, where it's going to be and where it's going to be in the future.
Yeah, that's what we're waiting for from Biari. So they're still putting that together and we'll have it all. It's pretty intricate what they have to do on that, so.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Councilman Pike?
Oh, thanks. Real quick, in terms of the ARPA funding, I know the last information I received was 4% of the state funding that the state has received, it's only been utilized. Do we have any updates as to what, is there any additional ARPA funds coming our way? Or do we still have to wait for what the states?
No, we'll still, we've gotten 3.25 of the 6.5 that we're going to be getting. The other part will come in next year's budget.
Okay.
Session, the other 3.25. And we are also, not only do we have the six that we're kind of setting aside due for this broadband system, but we also will have opportunities to go out for state funding and federal funding on top of that for broadband because it's such a big, you know, thing that they're trying to do throughout the country. So it'll be a good chunk to get started with. AMN, who we've talked about a lot, city, they started with a million dollars of general funds to get their program going. And we here have, you know, quite a bit more to get ours going, so.
Good. Yeah, I just, my question was because the state has not allocated all the funding out to the cities yet where that was, where we were with that. And if any additional funds were going to come through the feds, have you heard, I haven't heard?
Yeah, just what our initial 6.5 million that we were going to get.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions on that?
All right, excellent. We'll move on to public comment. Item six, public comment one. This time is reserved for the public to address their elected officials regarding concerns or comments they would like to provide to the city council regarding subjects not on the agenda. At times, the city council may seek comment opinions regarding specific city matters during this allotted time. This is not the time slot to give formal testimony on a public hearing matter, land use application, or comment on a pending application or proposal. Out of courtesy to all those wish to speak, the city council requests each speaker limit their time to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to? Yes. You can give your name and address for the record, please?
Rochelle Klein, 2130 West Franklin Road, Meridian, Idaho. And I just am here today to make sure that I had sent on April 26th, mayor and council, you guys directed staff to enter an agreement with Waste Connections for a long-term solid waste contract. And we followed that up with a white paper saying that that, there was no public notice before that was done. Outside the RFP, there was no public notice for any public comment. And since that time, we have let our drivers know the decision, so they've been talking to their customers. So the white paper, I didn't hear back from any of you on the white paper, but this is one of the single largest contracts that the city has. And we encourage you, this is not the time. There is no mysterious money. There's no $6 million to be saved in this contract. And if you looked at Bob Van Arnhem's write-up, there's the franchise rate, which includes the $400,000 that were required by contract to collect and remit back to the city each year. Compared those rates with Contractor Two's reimbursement proposal rates for the large cart. If you look closely, this is not the time, we feel, to burden our seniors, our veterans, our fixed income people, and our environmentally conscious people with a 58 to 66% increase in the rate, which is what you guys agreed to move forward in the proposal. And we will be letting those customers know that this is the time for them to speak out. So they've just now started having those conversations. We've been getting calls, we are sharing our white paper with the residents, the 1,900 households that fall into that category. That's a big, that's, this is not the time with inflation to burden those people, especially our seniors. And so we just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that this is just a tax shift or a burden shift to our most vulnerable citizens. And we encourage you to go back and do the due diligence, take public comment, do some surveys, you know, get the feedback that's necessary before making such a large decision that would impact so many people. And I think there are a lot of people over the years that have been really interested in the carbon negative fleet that we run. You know, diesel is the most carbon intensive fuel. We've made, based on feedback in Eagle over the last 17 years, we've made really conscientious decisions to go carbon negative and improve our air quality. So even a 20% bio component doesn't offset even close to the 80% diesel that we'll be running. And we buy all of our fuel from two dairies in the Magic Valley, which have negative carbon intensities of, you know, negative, almost 300 and negative almost 700, which is pretty impressive when you're, when a city's growing to keep, I guess, the environmental sustainability piece alive like we have done. So I encourage you to go back. I encourage you to work with the small waste generators and not just look at the large waste generators and potential savings at the top that will be burdened by the bottom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so everybody knows, we, you can go ahead, yeah, I'm just, we decided to go into negotiations with Harden. We have not signed a contract to say specifically what we're doing and not at this time. So that we're working out. If we can't work out the contract that works good for our residents, then, you know, we might go back to Republic, but we thought Harden was the best one to go with at the time. So that is where we're at on that, just so everybody knows. There hasn't been any increases. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir. If you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Gary Heath. My address is 2621 North Fowey Avenue, Eagle. And I'm here today because the, because the, of the item that's been added for new business later today, which is the approval of the Avamore Water Master Plan. I want to remind the city and council that your primary job as a taxpayer, I see that your primary job is to represent the interests of the voters in the city, in the city of Eagle, not the interests of the developers and nearby communities. So with priority one being the city of Eagle and the people that live here. As a homeowner and a voter and a registered, you know, person that lives in the city of Eagle, I'm very concerned about the addition of the resources, the drain on the, literally the drain of the water system of the city of Eagle and the future of the city of Eagle's ability to supply water to its residents.
So sir, I just have to stop you for a second because we can't take public comment on something that we're going to be talking about on the agenda. So if you want to talk something more broader or, but bringing up the specific issue, we will be talking about this in new business.
Okay, I just, I just want to just remind the city of council that you're, you may be about to make a very long-term bad decision for the city. And so I want to just remind you that it's, that the city, the city's residents and voters are well aware of the challenges and really want to support the council in making the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Councilman Bond?
Mr. Heath?
Mr. Heath? I got to ask you a question. It's Heath, correct?
Heath, H-E-A-T-H.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got the one. So I guess first one relative, we're not talking about, just in general. And this is one I've been, anybody that comes and talks is, first, where have you gotten most of your information relative to the, specifically water, relative to, we'll just not talk about, so Alamoor, Spring Valley? Where have you got most of your information relative to the decisions?
Some of the information I got from the city of Eagle.
Okay.
But, but most recently, the information that I'm, it brings up more of a concern to me is from the EPA and a report that was released 10 days ago from the EPA about the practices of the Avamore developer and the fines that they recently agreed to pay to the EPA. That directly affects the water systems and, and the ability for the development to be responsible with water and drainage and the environment. And those things bring up a very, very difficult, difficult, difficulty for me to accept that and trust that the Avamore developers will in fact be good stewards of this if we, if we as a city agreed to accept that long-term responsibility that would be, that would come with basically taking on almost the, you know, half of the city requirements.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks. I was not aware of the EPA report, so I will go look at it.
Google it, you can find it.
Nope. That's, no, that's what I need. Thank you.
All right. Yep, come on up. You can give your name or address for the record, please, when you get up there?
Yes. Nancy Viano, 704 North Nicholas Lane here in Eagle, Mr. Mayor and council people. I'm here more with a couple of questions. First, I have heard and just wanted to confirm that the town hall meeting scheduled for June 7th is not taking place?
Correct. We usually hold that on the fifth Monday and it was Memorial Day on the fifth Monday, so we are not going to have it this, this time around, but we'll have it on the next one.
We'll have it when then?
We'll have it on the next fifth Monday of the month.
Which will be?
I'd have to look at a calendar.
So is there any ever time when an exception is made? Because there seems to be several issues that are swirling about in our community. And I think it would be good to get firsthand information as opposed to social media or rumors about different things going on?
Yeah, well, I think usually when we go through this and we explain why we make decisions and what we do, there's usually a good way to go back and look at those videos and see what, you know, what's being said and what the council is doing, so.
Well, my personal opinion is there's nothing better than a town hall when everyone can come together and listen to one another and hopefully have some civil discussion about real problems that we feel we face and try and talk as a community about solutions to those problems that would be good for all of us. So I'd really like to encourage your consideration of perhaps a special town hall meeting in the near future.
I just want to remind you that during the town halls though, we are specific, we usually have something specific we talk about or because we can't talk about active applications or active things that we have to go through the process of doing. So we have to remember that part too when we go through it. We just can't be a blanket, we can answer anything about anything, so.
How would we go about having something where we can do that?
It's not going to. It comes through this process. It comes through, you know, when applications come in, coming in and be able to give public comment during those times when applications specific come in. Now, we can talk about things before an application comes in, but a lot of stuff we have right now, applications are already in, so we can't legislatively come out and talk about them except in the public, so it's fair for everybody.
Right. But we could talk about things that people have concerns that may occur?
Correct.
Okay, so.
As long as it's not about specific issues, right?
Again, I would just encourage that. My second reason for being here is because of the information that I heard that was just spoken to by Rochelle Klein, I believe, concerning the trash. That is one of the issues that I think has been swirling around through rumors. Certainly, anyone I've spoken to was not aware of this occurring, but it is my understanding now that this is not a done deal.
No, we, all we've done is said that we are going to go into contract negotiations with, we decided to go with Harden to go into negotiations with. So now we'll go through, we'll work out with them if there's some, you know, the best possible thing for our residents, so.
Okay. Given the information that was presented today and what I've heard from Republic, it doesn't sound like it is the best situation.
Well, I would consider the source. You've got someone who's upset that they lost, they lost the ability to have the contract with us. So I think we need to just wait and see what happens. What she's giving are not facts, right? They're assumptions, that's what's there. We have not negotiated contracts, so there are no definite increases in what are going to happen.
Is it true on the bid that we will no longer be charged rental fee for our waste?
We don't know yet. We haven't started the contract negotiation specific to it, so.
But when they bid, that you gave them, the bid, what was on there that encouraged you to go this route?
It was just the quality of service we thought we could get from them compared to what we're getting with Republic. It was talking with folks in Ada County who have already had Harden and switched from Republic. There was a lot of different kind of issues that went into that of why we decided to go with them.
And, and how will the negotiations be presented to the public?
Well, the negotiations will be done. Obviously, you have the contract negotiations are happening behind closed doors, but once we have the contract, we'll present it to the public so they can look at it and comment on it and give their input also.
And is there any, is it a done deal then by the time we comment?
No, not at all.
Okay, so that will be on the agenda coming up?
Coming up, yep.
Coming up, okay. Well, I would encourage you to make sure the bids are apples to apples because it sounds, again, this is one of my concerns through the mill here, that perhaps they aren't apples to apples. And I will say as a resident here for a number of years that have been very happy with not only Republic's services, but also their drivers that go through our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Nancy?
Just run away. Everybody's running away from me. Was it, was it Romano or last name?
Viano.
Oh, Viano, sorry.
Is it Victor?
Okay. I guess two questions. One, relative to kind of a town hall meeting, what would be some of the items that you'd like to discuss like that are outside?
Well, I think things like the dissatisfaction of a trash service. The, certainly I still have concerns over shooting in the city limits. I mean, I know this is kind of a done, but there are things like that going on in our community that are changes from who this small community was when I moved here in 1988. And, and I think more ability to, to have some more informal discussions with all of you as neighbors, as people who live here and who hopefully have the same goals for our community and not dependent upon perhaps any, any political issues that we have or differences that we have. Simply, what do we think in this community are some goals we should have, some problems we should, we should face, and some solutions that we could talk about and come to some agreement on? Or at least understand why we have disagreement and why it goes another way.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. No, that's good. So the mayor currently has his coffee. Would it be preferential to, so we have that one, same thing with city council members or something like that to be added? Because that's a really good informal setting. Any other ways, again, we'll do the town hall, look at some additional. If you can come up with some additional items to put in like discussion, those, we're always trying to put those together for the town halls so we can identify beforehand a good list of discussion topics. So that's a good one. Relative to the garbage, just wanted to throw that in is, the process that we get is basically we get two applications. Quite honestly, I got it, mine was based on price difference, safety issues, and the services provided. Based on those two, it was kind of clear cut for me. So we made the decision based on, at least I made the decision based on that. All that we're doing right now is, we based on that is to go into negotiations, like the mayor said. So I just want to make sure that's clear. We did an apples-to-apples comparison initially to make the decision. There is no final decision whatsoever. So what we have to do as part of the negotiations is did what they really put in the report, is that going to actually be, come to fruition or not? If it's not, then we can go back. So just wanted to make sure that we know the whole process from, where we get to go from.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think that if the council would hold some sort of coffees like the mayor does, personally, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm not running away now.
I'm done. All right, anybody else? No? All right, then we'll move on to new business. Number seven, action item, Avamore Water Master Plan. The city engineer is requesting city council approval of the Avamore Water Master Plan that is consistent with the Water Service Agreement, which was approved on March 22nd, 2022.
Mayor and council, Nicole Baird Spencer for the record. On March 22nd, you entered into a water service agreement with Avamore, which was that the city would become the water provider in the sense of we are maintaining and operating the system. The agreement goes a little bit further into provision of water and those things. But as one of the conditions of that agreement was Avamore needed to bring back to you a water master plan. That water master plan is to address wells, water storage, mains, water extension lines, pumps, treatment systems, and related infrastructure required to provide for the water system. We have since received a final water master plan. It's been reviewed by DEQ and by the city engineer. Today's event is to actually have you review that plan with the applicant and receive your engineer's recommendation before making a decision as to whether it's acceptable for the city of Eagle or not. Are there any questions about that?
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, going to tee up the Avamore then?
Mayor and council, Brad Famular, Avamore Development, general manager at Avamore. Our address is 18454 North McLeod Way. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, or this afternoon, I guess it is. Couple, couple different things that I do want to kind of point out is that, and Nicole brought it up right off the bat, is that this is just the next step in the agreement that we already have with the city. This step is bringing our plan forward to you that was already reviewed and approved by DEQ. The city engineers reviewed it. They've had a couple comments that we agree with. And then the city engineer will bring in his, his recommendation on a couple other items. The only, the only, only other items that we had on that were, and I, let me just jump onto this, I, the system that we're bringing forward to you with you guys today is a system that was designed and meets or exceeds ISPWC, IDAPA, DEQ requirements. We've been working with staff now for eight to nine months, and we've been addressing all of their comments throughout the process. When we originally submitted this application, it had a complete steel bolted tank. We have modified and adjusted that to a concrete-based steel bolted tank for, you know, part of their recommendations that they had. The construction timeline for our steel, if we were continuing with this and the steel bolted tank, would allow us to have customers online this, this late fall, early winter. If we had to go with a full concrete tank, this would take approximately 18 months to design and complete as part of the system. When we originally talked about this, we've been, we've been negotiating, or not negotiating, but deciding that, hey, a 25-year warranty plus a recode, one recoding is equal to what that, what that qualifications would be for, for a concrete tank, or at least what, what the engineer, city engineer would like to see. And we are still in agreement with that, providing that 25-year warranty and, and providing a coating between year 10 and 20 to allow for that life of that tank to expand over time. And I guess I will, I'll stand for questions on the tank. I do want to make one more comment about the EPA after you guys have your questions on this.
Any questions right now for Evermore?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
Mr. Famular, just go back to the agreement that we have in place. So we're going back to, this is relative to the master plan, but again, the biggest question that we've been hearing over and over again is that basically we're taking all the water from the city of Eagle and pushing it up to Alamoor. I just want to go back to this one is that with the agreement, how it states right now is, what are the water rights that Alamoor currently owns under, or is permitted for or can get?
Yeah, so currently, the Water Service Agreement that we have entered into with the city states that Avamore Development has five CFS of water rights currently that we are giving to the city, part of this agreement. And then there was another development that was part of that, because it was joint, it was a tri-agreement. That development was giving another five CFS water right as part of this group, Sage Group. And so that was the Water Service Agreement that went into place. Also in your Water Service Agreement, which the city demanded and we agreed to was, at such time that the water is not sufficient, the development stops at that time. And so, you know, if we get to, if our homes start using considerably amount of more water than what they currently do, and the city says, hey, we're running the system out here and you are beyond your 10 CFS that you have, even though all of our engineering and everything shows that we should be at about a six CFS for all of our full build-out for domestic water. If that takes place, then the city can say, hey, stop. Until you provide more water rights to the city, you can't build any further. That's what's in our water agreement currently. So it's not like, it's not like we are stealing water from the valley. In fact, we have to use the water that is currently up underneath our land and that we have a water permit for currently.
Mr. Mayor, follow up on?
Second one, so right now, so we have a net difference, theoretically build-out would be six CFS.
True.
Water rights available are 10 CFS, net difference of four CFS. Who pays for the water system?
Actually, so the developer, we pay for the water system up at, on all of our Alamoor property. And so currently, we're in design and approval for the 20-inch water backbone for the city of Eagle. So we would bear the cost of, of the backbone costs of all that 20-inch main, which is about 48,000 feet of pipe. The project is multiple millions of dollars, along with a tank booster station, a couple wells. And in the future, the city then will be able to connect their east side and their west side through this backbone system. Again, whatever's coming out of the ground, out of the two wells that are currently up there, or three wells, if you, if a future well needed to be added to our, our water permit, that this would suffice for our water. But then it allows the city to be able to have a backbone system so that if a well on your east side goes down, the city then will be able to pump water up to the tanks and back to the east or vice versa, so that you have flexibility on moving your water around where you want it to go. But again, this Water Service Agreement that the city has signed was very clear with us. Whatever we provide for water rights is the only thing that Whatever we provide for water rights is the only thing that we can use. And so, you know, we are in agreement with that and anyways.
Ms. Mayor, follow up? So relative to that, so Avamore theoretically will pay for the water system. That water system will be given over to the City of Eagle?
True.
So who will run the water system?
The City of Eagle will run the water system.
Okay. Who will monitor the water system?
The City of Eagle will.
So that is our basically, Mr. Mayor, follow up, sorry. So that is the City of Eagle's ability to basically enforce that requirement, is we will be enforcing that. Avamore will have nothing to do with whatsoever, as the city has enforcement and monitoring requirements. At such time that our water system says they are exceeding use, we shut off building, correct?
That is true. The city has complete control.
Good, thank you. Okay? Any questions?
I think I'm going to wait.
Okay. I'd also like to add too that this has nothing to do with annexation. If for some reason, that's a whole separate thing, if you do not get annexed, this agreement goes forward with us running the water system.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one other component to this? So there was an agreement that was put in place without Avamore's input or anything. And that agreement was with the purchase of Suez to the other water system, and the City of Eagle came up with an agreement on who could serve our land, you know, and we didn't have any control over that. That agreement was really clear that it says there was a portion of the land that Suez could have served, which, you know, is a large portion of kind of where it's at, and the city could serve the other half. What we've done with entering into an agreement with the city is saying, all right, city, you control all of it, we will give you all of our water rights, we won't give them to Suez, we won't allow Suez to come and step in, which is a different company now, but we won't let them to come in and take over any additional land than what they already have. And so, you know, we are just trying to follow through with what we have been given, and we are before you today. And I do want to address the one comment about the EPA, if you allow. And so, back in January, we had a contractor that was working on one of our projects, and it was adjacent to a creek, and he got within the 20-foot buffer zone of the creek. And so, the EPA called IDEQ out, they came out and looked at our site, and they cited us for a couple different inspection logs, and then being within that 20-foot buffer. We agreed with them that that's exactly what happened. We followed through, we made all the corrections within a 24-hour period, and in the letter that is out there, it even states all of that. They proposed to us a stipulated mitigation on the fines. And so we did enter into that with the EPA on this, and it was a substantial amount, it was $7,400, but it's not, you know, a million dollars what you've heard on other projects. And so, you know, are we proud of this? No, we are not, but we did follow through. And then if you do go and look at that, you will be able to see that all the corrections that were noticed at the time that that happened were corrected within 24 hours. And this is, the EPA puts this out for 30 days, it's just more of a public notice that this did take place, and I will stand for any comments on that, also, or questions, I mean.
Okay. Any questions? Nope?
I'm going to go ahead and ask a question. Brad, in terms of the DEQ and EPA, we hear a lot of comments from the public, obviously, on a daily basis, sometimes dozens of them. My question is the well, the quality of water outside the wells and the arsenic issue that comes with the wells and where they are, I mean, I could read the information, is below one and things of that nature, but I'd kind of like to publicly talk about the quality of the water that when you establish a well up there, and how arsenic comes into play with most wells. I have a well in Colorado that we had the same issue come up with on our property. So I'm concerned with the quality of the water for the public's peace of mind, and then how the DEQ and the EPA and, you know, the public utilities all participate in the monitoring of that, so the quality of water is proven itself outside of given, you know, inadequate quality of water.
Commissioner Pike, so that's a great question. So DEQ does require, and IDWR, Department of Water Resources, do have a requirement, certain requirements for drinking class water. The well that we currently have out there, and the second one that we currently have under production, the first one meets all requirements, federal and state requirements for drinking class standards. We do have other wells out in our land, and again, our land is extensive. We have eight miles of pipeline that we potentially would be putting in here, and on that, there's different areas that have different levels of arsenic. The current level that we're at right now, this water is good, cleaning, clean drinking water, but there is a couple wells that are out there that have higher-than-normal arsenic than for drinking class water. And so, we've recognized that, and we're trying to identify where the best locations are for these wells, and we believe that we've found them and tested them, and they've been really high-quality wells so far, so.
And then the second question, Mr. Mayor, to that, would be the irrigation component of the water, and how that water relates to, and separate from, domestic water outside of fire service, obviously, but the domestic side versus irrigation side, I think that's an important topic to explain to the public what exactly is going on in that part of it.
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, the Avamore design is one that we try to reuse 100% of our treated effluent. And so, our plan and our process that we've been using over the, since 2008, when Avamore was first out on the market in terms of homes were being built, is we have a sewer treatment plant that treats this water to a really high standard. That water goes to one of two places. Summertime, it goes for irrigation reuse on irrigation of parks and lands. And then the other one, it goes into what's called a rapid infiltration basin. This basin that is currently located in kind of Avamore Phase One, this basin goes and collects that water over the winter time, that we can then pull it back out and reuse it in the summertime. What we've come up with is on our overall master plan, that overall master plan calls this water, the treated effluent, to go up to what we call Sandy Hill. There's an existing aquifer up there that we aren't into for all of our, has not connected to the potable water. That aquifer that we have reapplied for a permit through IDWR will be turned over to our Avamore Water Reclamation Company. That company then, we will pump the treated effluent up into this aquifer, store it through the winter time, pull it back out over the summertime for summertime use. Whatever we put in there, we are asking for a water right right now to pull it back out and reuse for the homes and for our common areas, because it would be, it would be non-potable groundwater irrigation system. And so that system is being designed for all of our stuff west of Highway 55 currently, on all of our homes and common areas. And so, we are very water-conscious. We only allow 2,500 square feet of drought-tolerant sod. We really do try to have people put in more of zirkscape, you're required to have drip irrigation on all your trees, your shrubs, must meet your fire-wise components. But when you drive up there, it's a little different than obviously Eagle. We're not just dumping a lot of water on the ground and seeing trees grow up. Our landscaping is very, we feel tastefully done. When you drive by the houses, it's still, there's a lot of green that is there, but there's a lot of rock mulch and zirik landscaping, and we think it's, it looks really good, and it conserves a lot of water. Typical house in the valley uses almost 300 gallons per house per day. We currently are running at about 110 to 120 gallons per house per day. That is recorded since 2008 for the homes that are being used. And we can do this in many different fashions, research pumps, research pumps, low-flow fixtures and faucets and appliances. It's a whole presentation that we gave to you guys once before, but we would love to, you know, continue to speak about it, because we feel like if every home in the valley was able to do that, there would be ample amount of water in the Treasure Valley for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Russell.
Brad, can you speak a little bit about the build-out of Avamore, and since 2006, the number of homes that have been built, and what are you anticipating for, say, an annual build number? I know it's a little difficult in today's environment, and whether or not we will have an eventual recession again or what, but if you could just talk about those numbers a little bit, please?
Well, just real quick, I'm not sure, because this is about the water, if we should go into that aspect of it, because it's a water master plan, so unless it has something to do with what you want to see water-wise.
Well, I was just curious, your planning areas, you have identified three in this water master plan, and Planning Area 1 has how many homes then?
Commissioner Russell, so we are planning on building out approximately 9,000 homes over a period of 40 years. And with that, we'll do about 300 homes a year is what our plan kind of calls out. We have two different areas that we would build out pretty much first before we get into Area 3, which is more of ranchettes and open space. There's not very many homes up there. But this plan, this water master plan, calls out for all those areas. And the tanks that we're putting in, the booster stations in this backbone system serves all of Area 1. And so it's not, when you get to Area 3, that's a whole nother, pressure zones and booster stations and tanks, but we're not, we are not planning on being there for quite a while. And so, we don't, we have it in the plan showing that it's going to take place, but that's still quite a few years away. But yeah, we're planning on about 300 homes a year. And recessions, you know, I feel like with interest rates rising and things, we might see a little bit of flattening of the demand that we've seen so far here those last couple years.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? No? All right, thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're up, sir.
Mayor and Council, Mike Davis, HECO engineers, we're the city engineer for the city. Brad is correct, he's kind of given a good overview of what we've been through the last several months. We've been, this, we went through a couple reviews and a series of meetings over the water master plan and getting it to the point where it's at now.
Mr. Davis, can I get you to try to into the mic a little bit more? Yeah, that one's touchy if you don't talk right into it.
All right. So in front of you, I provided the recommendation for approval of the water master plan. I do want to point out that it is, I'm saying it's kind of conceptual, that's what it's kind of been based on. So it's basically the backbone of the system. It includes all three planning areas just for sizing, water mains, and future storage. So this is the two wells, the storage tank, and they're doing that one tank at a time, they're not going to go put them all three in, the transmission lines and booster station to serve Planning Areas 1 and 2. So I kind of wanted to point out that with this being conceptual in nature, future preliminary engineering reports, as development occurs, and this is going to be a DEQ requirement as well, is because it's conceptual, as more details are developed, future reports are going to be required. This provides the overall planning document, and the PERs will get into the details. And so I've noted there that that, as we look at the more detail, more flow data, updated flow data, there may be additional requirements that's not noted in the water master plan at this time. And then I also put in here that I wanted to be clear, this is for Planning Area 1 and 2. Planning Area 3, again, is in the water master plan, but like Brad said, it's quite a ways out there, and water master plans are usually updated every five years maybe, depending on the rate of growth. So I want to make sure that the booster stations and the tanks they plan for in Planning Area 3 will be reviewed in more detail at that time, and we'll probably see how, I guess, Planning Area 1 and 2 is operating, if we want to make any changes on how that is set up. We did have a meeting a couple weeks ago with the water department, and went through and brought in ACS, who is the SCADA control for the city, the contracted company, and we walked through how the thing is going to operate, be set up through the controls, and I just want to make sure that the water department was comfortable with that, and how they were approaching it, and they were. So I think we came away from that meeting with a, they have a better understanding of how it's going to operate, so I think they're all on board. I guess the last item is the, we wanted to point out that the water master plan does propose a bolted steel tank. The city has an existing concrete reservoir on the eastern side. We are planning for a concrete reservoir on the western side at some point. So with that, the bolted steel, we felt was kind of an alternative, as recognized in the water service agreement, that should be brought forth and specifically discussed, I guess, so you guys, it's not buried in the water master plan. So you're aware that that's the option that they are proposing. I've provided a memorandum that kind of goes through the advantages and disadvantages of each. They're all acceptable tanks. I put in there that we are currently designing all three types of tanks right now on projects we're involved in, and so they all are alternatives that are picked on based on initial costs or other parameters that weigh in on that decision. So I just wanted to point out that each has an advantage, disadvantage. I don't know if you want me to go through those, or it's self-explanatory in the technical At the end, we, if the, we recommended approval of the bolted steel tank with a couple conditions that I think are important for the city. We noted that a, we thought, they proposed the life of the steel bolted is 40 years, the concrete is estimated 80. So within that 40-year period, we think it's best if the city doesn't, for that life of that tank, doesn't incur additional costs related to the additional maintenance costs associated with the steel tank, where it requires a recoding in typically year 10, and then another one in year 30, which is 20 years later. So within that 40-year life of that, there's going to be two recodings of that required, which is, it's, you know, we just did one in another city, and it was 250,000. And so, it's quite the process to, you got to bring it offline and recode the interior and exterior. So, and when the engineer for HDR, for Avamore presented, that's about what they had estimated as a cost for recoding. So we were suggesting that, two things, the 40-year warranty to get through the life of the tank, I think Brad said 25 years, I think that was some initial discussions, but the recoding occurs in year 30. So we thought if the recoding occurs in year 30, typically those should perform for 10 years, and that's where we got to the 40. And then the other thing is, I think, too, so that the ratepayers don't see the additional maintenance costs associated with the recoding, that that's something that should be paid for by Avamore. And with that, that will help, I guess, offset some of that, you know, not doing a concrete tank and have minimal maintenance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for my recommendations or any information on the tank.
Commissioner Pike?
Thanks for the information, but real quick, all of these tanks are 500,000 gallons, or is there going to be like any million-gallon tanks, or do you foresee any need for...
The water master plans, Councilman Pike, the water master plan anticipates three 500,000-gallon tanks. I think they proposed that versus bringing in a million, so that when those get recoded, you do take those offline. And so that if they had two 500,000 at the one location, that's what they show, and I think they've even possibly three, just depending, but they do show that. So they've broken it up so that one is at least in service, is the other one is getting maintained.
Yeah, I was just curious on the growth and the total build-out, especially at the end of it, the life of it, right?
Yeah, they've, the whole master plan, the 9,000 units, they've accounted for the required storage through the DEQ requirements.
Of course, my main thing is fire flow requirements, so the substantial amount of water, especially up at the higher elevation for, you know, pump stations and lifts, whatever you need, it's all, obviously, it's all been calculated in, but just for confidence of the community, I mean, everything we can explain, I think it's imperative that we do that.
The storages are analyzed and... The storages are analyzed and sized based on operation, just, you know, daily flow, demand, and there's a component that is in there for, just for fire flow. And that, I believe on this one is, might be 2,000 gallons per minute for two hours? Or four hours?
Yeah.
Two hours.
Good.
Yeah, so there's a designated area or volume in the tank that's just there for a fire.
Right.
And that meets the DEQ requirements and we got, the fire flow amount is in discussions with Eagle Fire District, so we're on the same page there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
So we, the tanks, we have a redundant system with the tanks for if one goes down, we still have, or maintenance, so we have a redundant system there. You mentioned the potential for changes to the system based on flow rates, the development footprint. So we have a mechanism by which if anything changes, we're monitoring the overall amount, flow rates, and then any changes to the system, we have a mechanism by which you review it or city engineer reviews it and approves that. It's not identified by Alamoore. It's our engineers review that. And if those changes are not made, what is the mechanism, enforcement mechanism by which we move forward?
Councilman Bond, these reports will be coming as development is taking place or proposed development. And so, if those don't get reviewed and approved, and it's not just us, it's DEQ as well, then those improvements, the plans for those improvements can't go in and get approved by DEQ. So there is that mechanism that if they don't address all of the issues that maybe come up through the years of different flow rates or whatever. And I think the water master plan does recognize that they're using some older data and, but on the preliminary engineering reports, they're going to be required to update the data. This was just, again, generally for the overall sizing of the conceptual. So, yeah, there's going to be a lot of reports that have to come in and reviewed by the city and DEQ.
Just as a point of clarification, because this is outside of the city limits, we become a signatory to their plats regardless of location, so though they're in the county, we have to sign them as water, the water service provider, and that's where rubber meets the road. If they do not comport to any reporting or changes to the system required by us or DEQ, we will stop signing plats for them and they will not be able to sell any additional lots.
Mr. Mayor, that's where I was going with that, is the enforcement mechanism is we shut down development until such time it's fixed. Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. Any other questions? No? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion or additional questions for the Alamoore?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think I'll go ahead and ask Brad, yeah, come back up, because I think this is the number one question that we're receiving from the public is water, I mean, for Alamoore. It's not really the build-out, it's the water. And the perception is, and it's, I guess I always try to make this into a question versus a statement, but are we looking at it from the need to supplement Alamoore with our city municipal water in the future? Is there any guarantees that it would be, the well waters from Alamoore will always be adequate enough for the build-out for Alamoore? And then any additional waters will be trickled down to the city for their, the municipal consumption of the rest of the city? Is that an accurate perspective of that or is there a way to make sure when we make our decision in the future of this whole project, that the water seems to be such, it's a number one product, it's commodity, that we are not robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of the city's augmenting the growth and development of Alamoore? I want to make sure that the citizens are comfortable and understand that Alamoore is going to be self-sustained on its own and then any additional waters that are coming on the overflow, if you will, just using the term with that, will be utilized for the municipal portion of Eagle municipal water.
Commissioner Pike, good question. If I can clarify it just a tiny bit, so in our service agreement that we currently have with the city, so Alamoore Development, Sage Development, and City of Eagle, it states very clearly that only the water that is provided under the water permits that have been given to the city can be used up there. And so, if we go over our amount of water or if there's any, anything that comes up that we can't use that water, then the city shuts off permits.
And Councilman Bond alluded to that. So that's accurate with what we're hearing. I just want the public to have, make sure that we're talking apples and apples here. And that was my biggest issue here is the confusion or the rhetoric or the social media guide out there. It's got a lot of people confused and frustrated, quite frankly, because they fear what they don't know. I fear what I don't know. I think we all do. I just want some confidence that the citizens of Eagle will not be impacted in a negative aspect on water. It certainly is the life-sustaining quality of, you know, people. I mean, and everything, everything grows, needs water. So I just want that confidence there and I really want to instill that the citizens have their, the faith that we're making good decisions for, on their behalf.
Commissioner Pike, one more step to that is that on the overall master plan that is designed right here, there is so much redundancy built for a backbone system for the city and not for us, but for the city. I mean, our lines could be considerably smaller, smaller booster stations, smaller tanks. But the design that came out was this needs to be for the city overall and you guys, this is your portion that you build and that's what we're doing right now and that's what's in front of you, is that in the future, when everything else is connected into it, when you have a tank that goes down on the east side or on the west side or a well that goes down, you have ample fire flow throughout the city because you have this reservoir up there and you've connected your whole city. I mean, that's what good growth, that's what good public works is all about, is making sure you have a looped system that you can pull from multiple directions.
And I just want that verbally, you know, explained to people so they have a good understanding. That's because we're trying to absorb it as well. So, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
I'll make a motion to approve Action Item 7A, Alamoore Water Master Plan, which is consistent with the Water Service Agreement, which was approved on March 22, 2022.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion?
I would just like to say that, you know, one of the major concerns that I think a lot of us had in Eagle was the fact that Alamoore is being serviced by Suez, coming, water coming from the valley down here and going up there. And with what we've been able to do is to get the water rights that Alamoore already owned and we've been able to bring them to the city and make sure that that's what they're using to build their development, that they're not coming off the backs of what we have down here. They're creating their own system. They will, you know, build it, they will pay for it. You know, the money that's shown in this is what they will be forking out to build this system and the people that live up there and, you know, the City of Eagle water system will be the ones that will pay for this. It won't come out of general fund. It won't come out of, you know, everybody's, it's those that are the users. And I think that's just important moving forward as development happens around us. You know, if we can't, as a City of Eagle, control what's going on around us, then we get the control of what the other cities are doing. And I think that's a very bad thing as we move forward. There's a reason we live in Eagle because we like what Eagle does and we like what Eagle, you know, has been doing in the past and will hopefully continue to do in the future. So I'm just, I'm glad that we were able to make this happen and look forward to making sure it's done right and done to Eagle standards. So, Nicole, did you want to say something?
Just one point of clarification, does that include, that recommendation include the conditions of approval placed upon by the engineer?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I amend my motion to include the conditions of approval as identified by the engineer.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Second concurs.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to adjournment, item eight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.